From Camille, Tennessee, and Tom Dunn. I see we've been joined by Karen from the Jedi Committee.
Welcome. Thank you. Thanks for making it.
Sure.
All right, so do we wanna? I don't know.
Maybe hear from the candidate.
Yeah, the candidates first and then, all right. Camille, would you like to go first?
Sure.
Come right up to the box.
You're doing so good.
Do you have questions or should I just do a little spiel or what's?
A little spiel.
And then we'll bother you. Um, yeah, so I have been a resident of Windsor for coming on three years now and, um, you know, following the newsletter, I saw that there was a opening and it's been on my radar. Um, you know, as one of the many groups that this town has and as I've been getting out more, I feel like it's really important to get involved in my community and it seems kind of fortuitous that there was an opening or two, um, you know, coming up about now. I joined the library board and friends of the library, um, and just trying to help out and connect with my community and make sure that this town, you know, feels like a welcoming place for everybody. I've had a good time here, starting to come out of my cell and meet more people and go to more events. Um, and I'd like to, you know, keep that going and and get people out there and interested and, you know, make sure everybody feels safe and comfortable.
Do you have experience in like doing any like D E I stuff or like?
Um, I've been on historically in, um, a couple of my jobs, I've been on like those type of, um, committees or like, um, the Gay Street Alliance and stuff like that, um, in some of my like corporate jobs and, um, you know, helping out with other like charity events through work that are related to like, uh, I did one for a couple of years, helping certain children, uh, with reading comprehension over like lunch breaks and stuff. Um, so, yeah.
A little bit. That sounds like a lot. That's something like, what's your biggest takeaway so far in working in the outreach?
Um, I feel like trying to get to the people, to reach people like, um, you know, my partner and I have been going out to more local events, um, in the past like year or so, and we always have such a great time meeting people, but it's always a very small group. So my thought is like, how do we get more people out to these things to get to know each other so that we are all feeling, you know, comfortable in this community? And it's nice, you know, I'm getting to the point where I could be like outrunning errands and actually running to people that I know to say hi to. And I think, you know, in the bigger picture, feeling like not everybody in this town that you live in is a stranger makes things a little less scary.
In the world right now.
I think you also mentioned, because I was at the Jedi meeting when they interviewed you, that, um, some of your jobs in the past, you've, you've been like in customer service and you're really kind of used to, um, talking and dealing with all types of people.
Yes, I've done a lot of customer service on the phone and face to face in, in retail and some difficult types like doing, uh, disability insurance. So I do have a lot of experience. I feel like talking to different types of people and I, I like to think I come across as pretty like relatable and, you know, empathetic and understand.
Yay. Thank you so much for your time and being willing to enter the forum of this kind of stuff.
Nice for considering me.
Thank you.
I will say you have been getting out quite a bit. I don't know where you were before we started that. That's been great to see you out in the community.
Yeah.
So can we make a motion now? Don't want to have time? Yes. Make a motion.
We should do one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now make a motion to approve.
I second.
Jeffrey thirds on the record.
Is there any discussion? Ryan?
Hi.
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 Welcome to the Jedi Committee and thank you for your time.
Uh, just, um, I forget off the top of my head, does it matter what term you build? Because Jedi has got some scheduled terms, there's two and three years.
It doesn't matter to me.
I was gonna recommend, I think we have a three-year term. It'd be really nice to pop there. I'm not sure she's up for that, but.
It doesn't matter to me between two or three years.
Once you're locked in, it's, you, you can move.
Still have to come back to me.
No, no, it's perfect. All right. I'll, I'll put you in on the website as a three and you'll see an, an email between me and you and our I T department that will establish the Windsor V P dot E dot address for you.
Next up, um, come right up. Welcome.
Hi. Most of you know me already, Tom Dunn. And, uh, I, I thought it would be interesting because, um, growing up, I got picked on a lot and I know how the world was back then and how it is now, especially in Winter because it's my hometown. And I went to Winter High School and graduated. Um, but I think it was, it'd be important for me because I was always brought up to treat everyone the same. And I wasn't even allowed to use the word hate and I'd get in trouble. Um, and so I never really, growing up, I saw a lot of people get picked on and as well as me. And I've seen the changes throughout the years as, um, how people are to people and, you know, with the pandemic and such and everything, all the changes throughout the year. And to me, um, it's easy to get along with people if you, you know, talk to them and communicate with them. Um, the problem is a lot of people don't understand, especially people my parents' age, they're quite a lot older. I mean, my dad's gonna be eighty-eight in June and they don't quite understand a lot of the different, you know, and I try to explain it to them, but they still, you know, they just don't understand. And I think a lot of the older people don't. And some people live in fear of what they don't understand. There's a lot of that. If, if they don't understand something or someone, because when I was in the service, I traveled around, I have friends all over the world and I'll tell you this, it's good and bad everywhere, you know, it really is. And I love Winter. I love Winter like no one, no one else could love it. All right. And, uh, because I have a lot of good memories here. Um, and I just think it's important to let everyone feel they're welcome, you know, and it's, it's hard for some people because they're stubborn, they won't change the way they think. And we can't do anything about them people, but we can certainly educate the people to understand. There's some things I don't want to know. I have a question because I don't know everything. So I ask, but I ask people who know the answer so then I can share it with them. But that's about it. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Tom.
Do we have any questions, Tom?
Oh, yeah.
No.
Question?
Um, I did. I do. Um, so same question as Camille. Do you have any experience in doing diversity, equity, inclusion, any of the mix of those letters?
Do I have any experience? Um, life experience, but no real, like, I mean, I've done a lot of different things in the past and help out. And, uh, I mean, as far as winter goes, I've done a lot of, uh, volunteer work just because when we used to have the, uh, uh, the, uh, welcome center, the train used to stop and blah, blah, blah. So I'd have coffee ready in the bathroom and I'd tell people around, you know, where to go and all things happening in the town and stuff like that. And of course, with my television show I used to do on my journey, I haven't really done it. I, and I kind of did it sort of like what Tom does, but, you know, just explaining about different things happening and businesses in town and people in town. You'll get people to, you know, check out the town and be interested and such like that. And as far as that goes, I mean, people that come into town, you know, I like them to know what they can do and.
Well, you're, you're quite the ambassador. We see you around.
No, somebody actually told me that I could be the mayor and, well, you know, but it's just because I cheer up winter and I like people to enjoy the, the things we have and, and, and things are getting better and it's great, you know, things are coming around and people are getting more involved with things. It's important, you know, for all of us because there's some good people in the town.
I think one thing that from, I was at the Jedi meeting or when you were interviewed before, one thing that made me a little nervous is I think when you're on a committee like Jedi.
Right.
Which is a relatively new one and sometimes provocative, um, of a committee, like you need to be very careful with the language that you're using. And I've heard you say a couple of things that have made me a bit nervous. Like I think that you have a lot of room to grow in working on a committee like this and being involved with it. And having anybody involved either like at the table or in the, and the audience is not the right word, right? In the room with us.
Right.
To, to, to do these things and talk about these things. Like, I don't know if being on the Jedi Committee, you're necessarily ready for, but I do think that you are so ready to be a part of those discussions and learn and grow in that area. Because I think like exactly what Ryan said, like you are an ambassador. I just think you need a couple more tools before you can like.
Any kind of tools that help you, which is important.
Yeah.
I mean, I obviously don't know everything about a lot of different things.
Neither do I. I swear. I.
I, and I probably never will know everything, but I mean, I'm more willing to, you know, learn of anything and to help me out and help other people too. That's what I am. I help people out all the time.
I know. I see.
And I don't.
I love your dog.
I don't ask for anything from people. That's the most important thing.
Right.
Because I don't need that. I don't want that.
Yeah.
It's important to me in my heart.
I asked for a lot of help, so now I'm feeling bad.
People have, people don't like to ask for help because people are very stubborn, but it's important to, you know, let them know that the help is there.
Yeah. Thank you, Tom.
Make a motion to appoint Tom to the Jedi Committee. Oh, you have more questions?
No, I just don't think there's a second.
Oh, all right.
Okay. Uh huh. Tom, you know, I think you're very enthusiastic. I think you'd be a great person to attend the meeting and get involved that way. But I'm, I'm agreeing with Emma that maybe being appointed at this point is a little premature. Um, but I think if you attend meetings and are able to come alongside and be a part of some of the efforts they're doing, it might give you some more time to, um.
Get the balls.
Yeah, there you go. Those are the words.
All right.
Uh, next is consideration of the 2025 liquor permits. There's a list of the organizations in your, um, packet. These are the, the organizations that have submitted. Uh, you'll see there's also just those who haven't received the paperwork from yet. And then just to be clear, these are the local permits, not the state permits. Uh, I've met with the fire and police department and they all recommend approval. So if you would like to just make a motion to consider approval of this slate of those who have submitted, that could speed the process up if you like.
I'm not able to pull it up from the left.
I got it. I'm on it. It's, um.
Oh, Mary said it here. Okay. I've read it. It's just.
Yeah, I actually had one question. I, this is kind of random, but did the new restaurant that opened, I think on State and Main called Nod's Irene Jam? And I'm so sorry, I'm worried I'm saying the wrong. Did they apply for liquor license? Do they want one?
Well, there's maybe conflating things. There is the, the State and Main, it's the Georgetown Tavern and the other one is where Midville was.
Right, yeah.
Right. So.
Next, one's next to the diner, one's next to the Chinese restaurant.
Well, I'm talking about the diner.
Diner's gonna move, so.
No, I know. Okay.
Right. So we'll have a geography, uh, section on all.
I won't listen. I won't listen.
I, I am not, I have not heard that they have been interested in a liquor permit. Like, we haven't seen anything paperwork from the state. That's where, where that starts.
Oh, okay. No, no, that's, sorry.
So just there's, uh, the Larkin Country Club, Cumberland Farms, uh, Elks, Rite Aid, that probably I would be included, but I don't know that they're gonna be pertinent. Uh, Simon Pierce and Dollar General. And you can see there's first class licenses, um, that give you, uh, there's a club that you can like sell drinks, uh, and then there's to sell like, uh, containers and then like you can't drink it there. You're like, I'm gonna have a cocktail, I'm gonna buy a six pack or I'm going to a party, uh, and they're gonna give me or sell me a drink are the three kinds of licenses we have.
So we would need a motion to vote on him as a sleep.
I vote to.
You make a motion.
Make a motion. I vote to make a motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
My third year, so just hang on a minute.
Ryan.
Hi.
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 All right, the liquor, let's see, see.
So you'll have something to sign when you get the packet?
We have another action item to consider cannabis license renewal for Sunkist Farm.
Okay, so for the Google Maps version, that's the one across Artisans Park with the big hoof charms out there. It's a grow operation. Uh, again, this is a local permit. The select board is the Cannabis Control Board locally. Um, the state is the one that issues the permits, renews ones with the teeth. But again, I've spoken with our police and fire and they both support, uh, renewing the permit.
We did this last year for them as well.
Make a motion.
I second.
Is there any discussions? Ryan, how do you?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
All right, that's passed as well. We have another action item, resolution for a temporary one-year loan of $300,000 at an interest rate of 5.75% in anticipation of money to be derived from a sale of general obligation bonds. Consider approval of a $300,000 bond anticipation note for the REC HVAC.
Okay.
Was there a?
Yeah.
Okay, so no, Karen votes.
Summer and kids and.
So the, the air conditioning there hasn't worked since they installed it in 1961 because they didn't have an air conditioning invented back then, I guess. But so as you may have seen, um, and we have discussed, we are replacing the air handling system and it will have heat and it will also have, um, air conditioning. So that will be a new addition. Uh, what all of this mumbo jumbo is about is we have a bond authorization of a million dollars for building renovations. We will eventually, um, ask for the approval for a draw for that money. That happens twice a year through the state. They're doing the work now. So this is a, excuse me, common process where we get a bond anticipation note where we go to a bank and we say, can we borrow this a sum of money? And we promise we'll pay you back when they issue the bonds. So it's for a year, but it'll probably happen sometime in August that will, well, within a year. Didn't we do, what was the ARPA for the, didn't we do ARPA money for the REC for? No. We did, uh, like the beach got some money, uh, swimming area. I just remember we had playground.
Talking about this, we've been talking about this for a long time.
Yeah. Well, that's the end is to, uh, the, the, it's a redundant system. One of them failed completely a long time ago. We've been using that system for parts for the other one and it's been limping along. Uh, there is another item here that is further down that I don't have all the details yet, but, um, about, I guess eight or nine weeks ago, the heating system in the fire department failed. So, you know, it's a 20-year building and the stuff has a 20-year life and all of it was installed at the same time and all of its. So, um, the good news is the, uh, the, uh, fire department also has a radiant heat floor and that's enough to keep the temperature somewhat manageable. But with the medicines and stuff that are in the ambulances, uh, we had to get, uh, portable space heaters to put in the bays for the last, you know, uh, um, most of March, um, some of April. So, I'm sorry. Um, what I think the process is gonna be here is we're gonna ask to borrow this 300,000. We'll have it. We're working on the bond application now. We do the application. It's due the 19th of this month and goes to the state. The state aggregates all the applications. They go to the market, they get the money and that usually happens sometime midsummer. We'll get a check for 300,000 from them and we'll pay back this loan. Along the way before we, um, and I just misspoke and take that back. We're not gonna, we, we have another bond note. We're going to not go to the bond bank just yet. We're gonna wait till the fall. Because I think by the time fall gets here, I'm gonna be coming to you saying this is the recommended equipment we need for the fire department instead of needing a $300,000 bond, we'll probably need some, something between four and 500,000. Hmm. So we'll keep, we don't, we don't need to get a, a loan for that now because we can go through the process, find out what the price tag is. And by the time the fall bond thing comes, we can get the money and we can use the space heaters until we get that done. So.
They just light a fire in there. Sorry.
A while ago, the town burnt down the town garage. It's always bad form. It's really bad form to burn down the fire department.
That would not look good. That'd be funny.
Okay. So at any rate, so that is the situation. It's not glamorous stuff, but, um, if there, we can all be a little colder here in the offices and there is, you know, problems with the office system as well. I think the total quote for recommended, uh, equipment replacement for the town hall was $881,000. Um, and that's just because it's old and limping along. REC Center, we've talked about for a while. First, we've known and we, and just, we have replaced some components already, like, uh, with some ARPA money, we have $35,000 for a different heating. So, uh, all that rambling, I could use approval for a $300,000 bond anticipation note. There is a long document here that meets all the legal requirements that says we've done all the right things. We did put this on a town meeting warning, asking the town for authorization for a million dollars, uh, for building renovations. That part has been done and documented. Now I need your vote to do this and then later on we'll do a bond vote.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we, um, uh, sign the, the note for the 300.
$300,000 one-year note for a 5.75%.
5.75%, yes.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Ryan, how do you?
Hi.
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 We have another action item. Resolution of certificate evidencing due authorization of general obligation bond approved. Tom, put this in leaner.
Yeah, well, see, this, this is, um, a result of a ever increasing complexity in the lawyer world. So what I'm going to need, should you choose to do it, is authorization for a $200,000, uh, bond draw from our 2022 bond authorization for, uh, roads and sidewalks. There's another, there's a long thing that, that, the, the resolution certificate evidencing thing, that's a document there, that's words from the lawyer that were.
Okay.
Obviously awkward. So the, the point here is, is we, again, we had a million dollar authorization for, for roadwork. Over the years, we pulled $350,000 from that. We have 650,000 left. We do not have a major road project happening right now, but we also don't have any money to address that. We usually keep some aside like this. And, um, Central Street is gonna need some kind of patching, uh, before we do the big project. Um, Depot Avenue, which is, you know, down where the rail yards thing is, it, that's, that's bad. We have businesses back there and there's deliveries. So it's not a big project. We need something. Uh, we're going to need a, um, a match for a grant we got for a park and ride paving project on River Street. There, there was a gravel parking lot there. Um, but we'll probably need 15, $20,000 for a match to pave that. And we'll get a quote to pave the parking lot that the, um, uh, is part of the rail yards recreation. Uh, it just called for a hard pack, but if they're coming and doing everything else, then we can get it done for, you know, a good value. We'll probably do that as well. So I don't think all of that work is gonna come to $200,000, but, um, there's never a shortage of needs to say, hey, can you take care of 50 feet of this road? So, and this is actually the May 19th deadline to make the, the spring bond. Um, cool. So if we do that, we'll get the 200,000. Once we get it, we start paying interest on it and we expect to spend that between now and November.
So this is from 2022 that we're.
The authorizations, yes.
Okay.
So we need a motion. I move to approve that action item. And I'll second it. Is there any discussion?
What does that do? Like, what do you expect the payments on that to be, Tom?
Um, later on, we'll in general be discussing the impacts of things like that, but round numbers, a million dollars adds 80,000 to the budget. So it's a fifth of that. So, um, uh, so we're saying, uh, my brain just broke. So, uh, 20% of 80,000 is 16,000. How's that?
That was good. I still couldn't.
I ju, I just got off. So, yeah. So like it, the, the, getting the town meeting authorization doesn't cost us any money. Once we go to the bond bank, whether we spend it right away or not, it sits in the bank and, uh, we have to pay interest on it. So, um, when the interest rates are in the, the twos, it costs around 65 to 70,000 for 20 years. When the interest rates are in the fives, it costs more like, uh, 75 to 85,000 for a million dollars. So we'll go with 80, 20% of 80 is 16. So that's what it would add.
Tax impact is then be fairly minimal?
Uh, it is. And well, uh, we take all of this seriously, but it, it, it still comes in. There are certain things that are expected and, and it's the same thing we went through with the plowing of the sidewalks and things like that. Um, it's, it's not like it'll go away. It just means that we'll do it next year. It works. A bigger thing. And, and so this has just given us the opportunity to respond, uh, to what, what is already a pretty nasty situation.
I agree. Is there any other discussion before we vote? Mr. Palmer?
Uh, boy.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
One more action item. Consider approval of inter-fund borrowing to cover year-end financial activities.
Okay. So this is something we always do, but, um, uh, excuse me, Natalia and I have been, um, pretty focused on getting more stringent with rules on how we move money and, and being more involved. That's why we're having more financial updates with the boards. So every year we get to this time of year and we, we run out of money. And I've gone through the, why is that? And I'll go through that a little bit later on as well. But in, in essence, we, we come up about $2 million short. Um, and July 1st, we get a new bond anticipation note and, uh, we're off the races again. So what this is doing is instead of us just doing, like, I can just go to the finance department and say, take some money from our capital fund and move it over to the general fund. And then when we get tax anticipation back, but I want there to be more awareness. There to be more awareness for this happening. So this is, I, I'm asking if we can borrow nine hundred thousand. From our reserve fund and six hundred thousand from our capital reserve. Um. To meet our, our cash flow obligations through the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth. The expectation is we would do the six hundred thousand dollar draw this week. The nine hundred thousand dollar draw would be, I'm around June fifteenth. Um, of this two million, one point two million goes to pay off this year's tax anticipation. So we, we're required to pay that by June thirtieth. We get a new one July first. So that, that's really the drive. The driving factor is that and the million dollar check we had to write to the school this week.
Oh. Where was the, the nine hundred thousand and the six hundred thousand? Where were they coming from?
Uh, nine hundred thousand is from our reserve fund and our six hundred thousand is from our capital.
Thank you.
But that's gonna get paid back.
Yeah, that'll get paid back first week of July. And I mean, there's separate bank accounts. It's not just moving account numbers.
We're shifting money around. We're not.
We're not spending it. There's no interest on it. It's same taxpayer base for all of this stuff. So this is just. That's why I'd say we used to just do it, but, you know. Particularly with a transition coming, I think the board and the community should know, this is a normal course of action. I would not want somebody to come in and. You know, their introduction to Windsor and come to the board and say, hey, by the way, we're two million dollars short. And you don't have any frame of reference to see how that works. The nice part is we actually have. One point five million in the bank that we can borrow from ourselves. So. It, there were times when we would just call the school and say, can we just wait till July to pay you? Um. So it's, it's a improvement in our fiscal position, but it's gonna be an everlasting thing, no, no matter what.
Alright, so we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to consider the approval of the inter-fund borrowing to cover year-end financial activities.
Is there any other discussion? Ryan, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Now we have a discussion item and possible action item. It's the need for replacement of failed. Fire department H R system.
So there's been so much action going on. We'll just discuss this. Uh, what we're doing is Kevin's working with the contractor to go through the, the list of all the items. Um, and what do we need versus what should we do, uh, to find out exactly what we're gonna need? Some, some. There are some interrelated components that are required. Some it just would be better to replace it all at the same time, but not necessary. Kind of like with the recs system or there was a eighty thousand dollars in controls that went along with it. Our current controls works. We didn't get the control package this time. It's things like that.
What you think that's gonna run? Do you say?
Um, I'm thinking between a, a hundred and two hundred thousand.
That's for the fire department H R system.
Right. Going to clerk's office, you look out at the room, out the window and you see stuff on the roof that doesn't work. That's what, that's the value you get. Those two things will look new.
What's the timing of this?
Before it gets real cold again.
Okay.
And I guess I, I, I should throw in there, it's, um. For a long time, we've been talking about this, uh, state low interest loan program for energy efficiency. Um. Because they, nobody had a baseline for the efficiency of the rec center stuff because it was so old. It's like, well, then we don't know that it's more efficient. You can't have the money. Well, we, we worked through the bureaucracy and, um. We, we have, we have been approved based on the energy efficiency improvement. So, uh. The contractor got efficiency Vermont involved, bond bank got permission. So we all, they all came to an agreement and talked whatever language is that they talk. And they said, okay, you checked that box. Now you all, all you have to do is qualify for the bond, which we'll be allowed to do. So that'll be good news. So that'll be more like a two point two percent interest rather than, you know, the fives.
And how long would it take to do the work?
That, well, this is gonna be done in a week.
Oh, okay. So it's not like a.
So there's nothing for you to vote on. I'm just saying it's.
But possibly in the near future.
Yeah. Yeah, if it, if it turns out that we just, like, it's gonna cost five hundred thousand dollars because we have to buy all the parts. That may be something where we talk about spending. Three thousand dollars on really big space heaters to get through a winter.
Wow.
I mean, the other thing that can happen like that is just availability. Um. It's getting much better than it used to be, but it's not like you call people up and they have them on the shelf.
Alright, we have one more discussion item here. The trans-public outreach effort related to the replacement of the Route Five Bridge.
Okay, so in your packet, I put an updated form. You may not see it, but there's a very pretty picture of the bridge. It's that bridge. It's the one by the Precision Museum.
It looks really great from that picture.
It does. It's not the best vantage point to drive across it from, but it's pretty underneath and it's. Um, and the picture is, well, say, it's important. Architecturally, uh, this concrete arch bridge is a thing and, um. People who are into such things would like to preserve it. Uh, there's also, if you walk across the bridge, you see where there used to be light poles. So it was a pretty big bridge back in nineteen thirty one or whenever they built it. Um, and it looks bad. It's not structurally that unsound. We'll qualify that. I still go around Maple Street, but I got away, but, um. Uh, you may have seen last summer, uh, the state was out there with a boom truck, you know, taking pictures and everything from the underside. So this, this is a town bridge. This is not a state owned bridge. Uh, because it's within the urban compact.
Yeah.
But the state is, they go and they inspect all, all the bridges every so many years to give you an update on the, on the, um. Condition and it has made it onto their to-do list to fix. So the expected timeframe is maybe twenty seven ish, maybe twenty, probably twenty eight or twenty nine. So it's not gonna happen right away, but they're in the, let's do the inspection. What should we do with it? Should we replace it? Should we repair it? If we replace it, what it's not? And part of that process is community public outreach. So we have the new chair. Of the planning commission, this, this, they would be involved. Uh, and with this, what they're saying is they've given us some dates. June sixteenth, seventeenth, twenty third, twenty fourth, twenty fifth and twenty sixth. And, uh, what they would like to do is have a, the community forum and invite interested people to come and take their input. What do they want? Um, and I'm sure we're all gonna want a pretty big bridge. Um, the state is going to shoulder the majority of the cost. But even a twenty percent or twenty five percent match, that's, something like that is gonna be required. And if this is a. Two, three million dollar bridge, that's starting to be real money. Um.
You think we're getting away? And you think it's a two or three million dollar bridge or do you think it's more?
Well, I, it's, see, that's where it comes in. If, if they replace it in kind, it could be a five million dollar bridge. I don't know. If they put a, uh.
Couple steel.
Just a basic old bridge that bridges look like these days, it could be, um. You know, one point, it's got, I assume it's gonna be one point some, it's gotta be one point something. Uh, and I'm guessing that they would much prefer to repair it than they would to replace it just logistically. You know, given the covered bridge isn't an option for every vehicle. Um, there is the Maple Street workaround kind of thing, but. Anyway, they would have the details. So I think they just, they, it's okay to come in and say, we want the prettiest bridge ever. We want a toll bridge. We want whatever we want. We want a covered bridge and they'll take that all in and they'll come back and they'll say, okay, well, this will be this much and the town will have to pay this much or that kind of thing. So what I'm looking for you, they said they normally do it at select board meetings, but I said, we only have one meeting in the summer and it's probably gonna be a long meeting. So why don't we pick something else? The planning commission has said that they would prefer the twenty fourth, twenty fifth or twenty sixth. The twenty fifth is a select board meeting. So you are the bosses. So you get to pick whatever date you want, but the twenty fourth and the twenty sixth would be preferential to that.
I think I'm in New Orleans for that.
Twenty fourth is a Tuesday and twenty sixth is a Thursday.
Twenty four, twenty six.
Planning commission, has any thought, Cliff?
Any one of those dates, uh, at the end of the month was fine by us.
Because it's all about, you're talking about June.
Yeah.
If, it's gonna really hinge everyone's opinion. I'm only gonna be able to go to the twenty fourth, I think, because I have. The twenty fourth works better for me.
It does for me as well.
Actually not available on the twenty.
Somebody there virtually most of the states, but it was just like.
Twenty fourth sounds great then. Twenty fourth, I don't need to vote. I'll just let this, uh, state know and then I'll, I'll get some information from them and go about getting the vote out to the public.
We know what time around.
I'm gonna guess it's gonna start six or six thirty.
Perfect. Oh, my gosh.
And where?
I thought welcome sign.
Will there be snacks?
Uh, heavy orders. It's the steak. Never know. Feel free to bring, show up.
I am really good at making deviled eggs.
That's favorite.
Is it an open bar?
On Main Street somewhere, but concealed carry together, yes.
Now we're gonna go into old business.
Yes, Jedi people, I love you so much. I'm worried this is gonna sound so rude, but if you've had a long day and you want to leave, you are allowed to and I love you. Thank you. I was saying that because I'm like, also.
Thank you guys.
I thought they were just having a good time.
I'm sure you are. I'm sure you are. Thank you. And you can watch the rest of this in your PJs if you want, whatever. Okay, I love you. That sounds like I'm like kicking out the public before.
No, but I get it. Okay, so I was like, I don't know if they know.
Don't you think people know they can do whatever they want?
You know, like.
Well, anyways, it sounds like it's gonna get interesting this next conversation.
No. So under old business, we have an action item to consider approval of R L F loans. In the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purchase and placement of two modular homes to be located at fifteen and twenty nine National Street.
Okay. So we've been talking about this for a while. Um. In recent conversations, there was interest in, uh, improving the aesthetics of the homes. So we got back with, uh, updated quotes that provide, um, porches. And, uh, uh, upgraded siding and trim work and that kind, still, still vinyl sided, but, uh. A reveal that is more consistent with flabbard siding and wider, um. Corner pieces. So it is, it will look like the house that the town has already done on Jarvis Street. So it's, it went from a hundred and ten thousand a house to, uh, I'm sorry, two hundred and ten to two twenty five. And the expectation is if they can order the houses now, that they would be installed for the summer. Um, this summer, this summer, they're modulars. They're modular, Greg can do the foundation himself, so. Yep, so, um. On just a bigger picture of all that, the, over the years, we've had pricing from other mod- modular. Processes or renovating the houses and those, those estimates started at two fifty and that then include the site work. So the house that we did in two thousand seventeen cost about a hundred and forty thousand dollars to do that. And we've had, uh, uh, good relationships. I think it's the original tenant that's still in it and. Not to get into the, you can get into as many details as you want, but. The, the expectation is taking it from the revolving loan funds and I've had to adjust the numbers a little bit, taps us out. But, um, there will be, the rent money will come back in and do that and we do have the blight bond that we can pull from. If, if somebody came along and really wanted money, but we haven't had a, a significant request for a revolving loan fund for some time. So I really can't see going to the market to, to borrow.
That's what I was actually gonna ask. Is there, do we have any like usual suspects for that? Like I know Silo has applied a couple times. If I'm remembering.
You are correct.
Okay, but so there's not anybody that we would be leaving out in the cold that you're expecting.
There's, I mean, Blake Hill just, uh, went through, you know, expansion.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, and what, um, what you may not know is. Uh, Bob Flint with the Springfield Regional Development Corporation, he's involved with WIC. Uh, when. Uh, when WIC became the owners of the old Goodyear site several years ago. That organization that had owned it also had a revolving loan fund. And those funds were transferred to the Springfield Regional Development Corporation. And I think it was around a half million dollars. And now they cover thirteen pounds or something like that with that money. But, uh, honestly, Windsor and Springfield are the only two, maybe Cavendish a little bit, that have that kind of. Economic activity that they've, I don't wanna speak for them. My point is that there, there is a second source. But even in, um, the, uh. If everything goes according to plan and, uh, you know, my expectation is we're gonna have to be getting at least, uh. Fifteen or sixteen hundred dollars a month for the rent.
For how many bedrooms?
Two. The nine hundred square foot house.
Okay, so it's two bedrooms and the sixteen hundred, so each person would be paying eight hundred.
Well, I know in my family, we have four bedrooms and I pay all of it, so I don't know.
No, you're not like other people.
I know. Okay.
Okay, sorry. I just like. Okay, alright, eight hundred plus utilities. That's awful, but like not really. Do you know what I mean?
That's kind of like the going rate, like I've been looking at apartments.
Well, and, and like, you know, I caution, you guys can use, can do whatever you want. But what you're saying is I wanna take somebody else who may be having a difficult time. Meeting their obligations and giving some of their money to subsidize somebody else's rent. That's, that's what.
No, I think eight hundred is, I think the, the pricing is appropriate. I'm sorry, I just wanted to like. And I thought that that's what it was, but I just wanted to make sure. And the other question that I had was, how are we doing the filling of the spots? And do we have a manage, do we have a management company for?
Uh, I would, I would expect that River Valley, who's in town and has been managing the, uh, Jarvis Street House. Um, without issue, uh, they've been responsive, um, that it would go through that kind of process and the. Once this all happens, the market rate would, we'll, we'll get guidance on. So what, what should this go for in the market?
Wait, so it's only gonna be that much for a little while and then we're gonna change it?
Oh, no, I'm just saying, I, I'm basing that number on what it's, what it would cost to borrow that money and carry the thing that would, to not subsidize it. And that, that's, that's thinking as zero percent interest.
Yeah.
So, and the idea would be, I would suggest, is it gets marketed as a rent to own.
Yeah.
And that if somebody signs on and they're paying whatever they're paying for rent, that that could go towards the equity. Because we're getting our funds re- reimbursed, right? If they live there three years and they go, oh, I got transferred to Houston, well, they don't get their money back. But if they get to a point where they can use that to go to a bank and get the financing and pay off the rest of the loan, then we're, you know, we're made whole. So that helps them. And the reason you have to do that is because this house, it'll cost two hundred and twenty five thousand. It'll probably get appraised by a bank for a hundred and thirty. A hundred and fifty, that kind of stuff. So if that happens and you go to the bank and they say, sure, we'll loan you the money, but you have to give us a hundred thousand dollars. Down payment and that kind of thing. So this is a way to get somebody into homeownership through a creative way. And, um, no benefits everybody in the neighborhood, all like that. And it will all be plug compliant and energy efficient and, uh.
I, I guess I'm still hung up with that, that. It seems like for quite a few years, you had said a lot of the time to not be landlords. And we're just.
I've never said that.
That, you've never said that.
I'm a big fan of being a landlord. I am.
So we've had this discussion over the years and. And I've always gotten that impression that you didn't think the town being a landlord was the best way to go about things.
To be completely frank, I kind of remember it the same way, but I do think, like, I, I remember you being kind of like hesitant about it. But at the same time, like, I think this is brilliant and I think this is really important. And if you change your mind, then I'm okay with that.
Well, what I was leading to, it, it does concern me about having nothing in the revolving loan fund in case somebody does come. Um, and I understand the premise that, you know, nobody really has been taken advantage of it. So. But I feel like because I know it's a town and we're kind of borrowing from ourselves. I, I feel like just this work order is not enough to go on and say, here, let's sign over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We don't know what any of this work is going to amount to, add into the two twenty five.
Nothing gets added, that's in.
Yeah, yeah. It's all.
It's all, so, you know, I'm usually when people have done revolving loan funds, they, they've come to the board and given a proposal. And so you know, everything's right there on paper, when things are gonna come back, what's things are gonna go for, and I feel like I don't have like enough information. And so, I'm, I want housing in Windsor, don't get me wrong, I'm really a proponent of that, but I'm just not sure about going about it this way. So maybe somebody.
Oh, I'm just that or. In my.
Maybe I'm not asking the right question.
No, I think you are, I think the person that's coming and explaining it all is just, is Tom. Like, do you know what I mean, and coming and like, because who else would come and like advocate for this would be the people that are gonna be able to be in that house?
No, I would have thought it would be possibly um the contractor coming. Although I know.
So let, let me provide some clarity, I hope.
Okay.
This is the same contractor that's moving the dime. So he's doing a project, he went to the DRB, he got all, all the permits and explained, I don't think he did get a permit from the DRB yet, but anyway. He did, he did, right, so that's his project, his money, he's doing that. We went to him and said, can you do this? Where we are right now is, he said, well, will you buy one from me? And I said, well, I don't have that kind of money. So he goes, well, then I'll draw you a pretty little picture and I'll tell you, I, I'll give you a price and I'll stay on the high. So, in order to get more information, the details that you're asking about, you vote to authorize the money, that doesn't mean tomorrow I write a check, that means the town fathers have authorized the, the spending of the money. Then we will get pretty pictures and the full proposal, like if you wanted to go buy a house from the, from the company. This is Bill Lake Homes in Schenectady or something like that, that they do, that a variety of models. This has been customized to a degree to make it more consistent with the homes in the neighborhood, so it's not one of their, I'm gonna go pick the Essex model. So, in order to get them to spend more money to flesh this out, we have to show a commitment. They will not give the commitment without the knowledge that uh we have the money. Like, if you go buy a house and you say, well, do you, do you have a mortgage commitment, and they say, no, they say, well, come back.
I can see putting in a deposit, but to give over the full amount, that's.
We're not giving them any money.
We're telling them.
We're just saying, we have it, here it is, we proved to you we have it, it's in our account.
I'm allowed, yeah, the, the town has said, we want this. Now, if they come back and they say, the only thing we have is construction orange siding and it's gonna be thirty feet in the air and whatever else you wanna make up. You say, well, we're not moving through with it, but what they're gonna come back with is, this is the construction, this is how it's framed, these are the, you know, the details of the construction. Um, so I, and the, the, the part that I have that none of you have is really going on ten years of these kind of discussions with different builders and building the house already and see how this process all goes. And a, a, a number of conversations with, with the builder on this. It just, I have a lot more information and I'm kind of just saying, hey, I already know this stuff, so come along and do it. But if you want it to happen, you have to, you gotta quit dilly-dally and there, there is no information that will change the core issue here, this is how much the houses cost. It's gonna, they're gonna be five hundred square feet and these are the lots that are gonna go on.
So, this action item is us flashing a hundred dollar bill in our, like saying, I would spend this, show me what you got. And then if it's bad, we say, I'm putting that away.
And are we at risk if we pulled out them with anything?
If, if the house shows up, like, and, and there, there's a payment schedule, you need, there's a down payment, once we sign the contract, this is not a contract. Sign the contract, X completion is more money, the rest is on delivery. Okay, like any house, there's a punch list and things like that. So, thi- this is, this is just buying a house.
Yeah.
Uh from that perspective, the difference here, maybe we're the uh lack of clarity of message is we have been through this enough to know that no commercial bank is gonna get behind it, if you're gonna use somebody else's money, like the state, you're gonna pay five hundred and fifty thousand dollars per apartment, not two hundred and twenty five thousand per house. That the market is what it is, it's as hot as it is per residential market, but the values still do not allow someone to come through and get conventional financing. So is the town gonna do it? There really, there isn't another option. And the, the notion of the town being landlords, I think is one of those things, if, if you say it enough times, people must think it's true. But there's housing authorities, like every big city has housing authorities. Governments are in the housing business all over the place. This is, if anybody can tell me an issue that has come to them because we have been in, in the landlord business since two thousand seventeen, has it created any anxiety for you?
No.
Is, there's somebody living in town that wouldn't have been living in a house that was uninhabitable? If this goes well, is there an opportunity to do it twenty more times? Yes. There are state people that want me to inform them if this gets approved, the, the people at Windsor Wyndham and at the state economic development, because they too are struggling to find ways to cost effectively move housing forward. Um, so, if it works, great, if it's not, no harm, no foul, the worst it's gonna get is what we already know, we're going into it saying we're gonna have overpriced houses.
This, I, I think that the, what this could do and the mission of this is worth draining or getting, draining the revolving loan funds, but ballpark, because I know you don't have your phone and I personally can't do math, how long would it take to fill up the revolving loan fund? Are we just saying bye, that's gone, we don't have that anymore as a town, because I thought we were supposed to have that.
Well, um, we don't have to, the board can vote to move all that to the general fund whenever they want, at least the the, the big one that we use. The uh, if you look at here, revolving loan fund A, we can use that for whatever we want, including putting it in the general fund.
Okay.
Uh B, in the Cox House, uh are revolving loan funds that were related to the renovations of the Stoughton House and the Cox House back in the day. And um they can only be used for housing. So, that's, and then, you know, getting, if, if there, if a compelling business need came forward that needed revolving loan fund money. The Springfield Regional Development Corporation is, is an option that is exactly like ours, and if they happen to be tapped out or don't have enough to cover it. We can do a bond anticipation note where the town could say, we'll lend you X amount of money. We go to the bond source, we say, we're gonna lend it to you at current bond rates, you know, so it would be a pass where you've even added a percent to cover the risk, but a good business opportunity will not be turned away because of the lack of funding. And if you just did a year's worth of twenty five hundred dollars a month in rent coming in, in a year, we'd have thirty grand. Which. At sixteen hundred, for the whole thing, sixteen hundred, so.
True.
Twenty-three years, so if you divide that in half, you're at, where that is, twelve, not quite twelve years would repay it.
We also don't know what any of these other costs are going to be on top of the two twenty five, right?
And Greg's work where he's saying. And that's all included.
Like, it says, does not include.
If there's ledges or.
Include.
Oh, the, the, right, so you'll never know that until they do the work. I just looked at the site work stuff. So if they find unknown things.
Which most people tend to do, it's like, then this goes up even higher for housing. So that's kind of, like not even knowing, at least what we think that might be an estimate, I, I know you can't predict the future.
I guess so, that, that's the thing.
You know what I'm, I'm trying to say?
I, I do, but my, my question would be, those are saying, we're not responsible for unknowns. The reason they're unknowns is because you can't know them until you get into it, right? They've done one already and they haven't come back and said, well, you know, when we did the one that's right next door, we ran into all of these things, so there's a working knowledge by the same contractor. Do it, and there isn't another option. It's kind of like, do you move this forward or not? Um, they're not gonna get cheaper. We've shopped into builders all over the place for eight years. There's not been interest, we've tried to give the lots away, there's no interest. The neighborhood continues to deteriorate on people that aren't taking care of properties and we have seen the one house motivate some people to spend money on it, so while it may make you feel uncomfortable to authorize four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I get that because, I mean, this is, this is one of those things that you look back and you go, we made a decision that really made a difference. Or, I can't believe what those folks did in two, twenty twenty five. And that was really the discussion back in two thousand and sixteen when we did that house on Jarvis Street, because it was much more, why aren't we bulldozing all those houses? Not why are we building one?
I think that one of the biggest public like outcry, outcry that I've heard in my time is them like, please do housing, please do housing, please do housing, so.
Well, I totally get that, and I'm for housing, but.
I'm scared to not have that.
I do, I do diligence if we're gonna say, sure, go ahead, and I want.
I know, we've already voted on spending a lot of money.
Else to, if someone, you know, in the town, I wanna be able to explain that, why we made that decision. And I wasn't feeling that I was getting all the information, so that's why I'm bringing up these questions.
Well, here's the light at the tunnel. You vote, you vote to say, yes, we wanna move forward, and you can do all the due diligence we want before the contract gets signed.
Right, well, I also didn't understand that until you.
Well, that, that's why I'm here.
Said it, right.
And that, that's like, this is a work order, like, like, this, when you buy a house, you don't get that.
Right.
So, when you buy the house from these people, there's, it's a, it's not Blanchard, it's Bill Lake Homes have been around for a long time and there's a lot of paperwork that goes along with it, so. Now, I think one, one of the things that Jeffrey and I sat through today is uh revolving indecision. It's a prison, well, I don't know if I wanna decide to do that, okay, well, what do you wanna know? I just need a little more information, I gotta, I gotta, if I'm gonna spend money, I want there to be no risk. Okay, well, we just won't spend money, if you don't spend the money, you didn't have the risk, and you can't measure the things that don't happen. Like, how much tax money do we lose by having that neighborhood continue to degenerate? Well, I'll, I'll make up a number for you, but um th- those are the, that's the other side. Long-term plan of this is to rent to own, pay down the principal to where they can get a loan on these. There's no other way to really accomplish that in the open market. Correct.
That's an inspiration I guess, to better their properties.
Nope.
Certainly. And if it works, we can use the same modular concept on the lot that we own on River Street. Um, we can use it on the lot we own at fifty-four Union Street. So, it's a proof of concept, like I think what, the, the first one on Jarvis Street, prove that you could rent a house in that neighborhood, if it's a nice house, that's energy efficient, that the people down there are nice. It's a easy to walk around location and it works.
Downside, so, we know what that, we know what you're selling. Downside is what we've drained the revolving loan fund. But you're saying that we, there's other options for somebody who wants to come to the town for revolving loan money.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if we get stuck with terrible tenants that aren't paying their rent, we have to go through, I mean, it is being a landlord in Vermont, which is not easy, um, but we are getting assets in return, so worst thing is, gosh, we've got a terrible record of renting it, we wanna get out of this. Nobody is supporting it, so we sell the houses for ninety thousand apiece, take our lumps and the ninety, a hundred and eighty minus whatever, in addition to whatever rent we get, we've, we've learned a lesson. But, on the plus side, we go from collecting two or three hundred dollars a year in property taxes to thirty five hundred dollars a year in property taxes, we collect two thousand dollars in new utility bills and set up.
Not in a property tax until we sell them.
Uh, we, that, that part is, well, we can, we can.
Tax ourselves, huh, tax ourselves.
We can, we can, we can do that. You can find, we can charge you whatever we want, just that people have to be willing to pay. So if we're taxing ourselves and we're willing to pay, we can do it like a pilot, payment in lieu of taxes.
Part of the rent goes towards the property tax, but it also has to be affordable enough for somebody to get rent down there.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna diminish the details, but this is the issue, we have a neighborhood falling in on themselves, this is a way to start improving the neighborhood. Are we gonna make money out of the gate? Probably not, can we lose all the money? We will not lose all the money, can we lose some money? Yes.
But this is not money that's gonna affect anybody's tax bill, we're kind of gambling on making this better down there, being somewhat unorthodox in our approach.
I think that's great.
Yeah, well, I'm enthusiastic, I don't have any new information, but it is, to make it clear, this isn't the sign that I write the check. You sign that and it starts the purchase process.
It looks as it's written, though, it is, and I think that's why, you know, Mary was very concerned as well. It does look the way it's written that we are uh telling you, yes, write this check when you're ready.
And that's understandable, I just wanted a prettier picture.
Why? I thought one of your grandkids did that.
That's what I, I said, hey, guys, now this is, I look at the website and I see all these nice floor plans and all that other kind of stuff. You give me a crayon sketch, well.
Right.
That was done in Microsoft.
You write a check for four thousand dollars and they will be glad to give you a beautiful picture. How committed are you?
Saying.
Oh, well.
I, I wasn't impressed with the picture either, I mean, it, it's a sketch, it's a sketch. With the house, if you look at that.
Yeah, yeah, not, it looks okay.
Right.
Well, I'd like to make a question, and I think we've discussed, I don't know, I don't know if we.
I don't think, we don't have a motion.
Well, I'm calling, or, I would like to make a motion.
I vote to move to have approved the action item having to do with the revolving loan fund drainage. I will second, I was like, oh my god.
Discussion?
Is there any more discussion?
Anyone?
Anything?
Yes, having input?
I'm allowed to input a couple of things, I wouldn't mind.
Sure.
Um.
Raise your hand. Come in the hot seat.
I gotta go to the hot seat. Yeah, I would, I would say from the way you've worded it, we have options once to look at everything. I think that I encourage the board to look at this as two projects, not one. They're very different locations, and the land that they're actually sitting on, it is extremely different uh situations. I think fifteen has a lot of problematic things with it, in my opinion, somebody who's done these houses. And saying that this is gonna be hard to market, um, it's a body, it is just right on the property lines, like a lot of them are, they're like right next to each other. But the project house we did, the parking lot is behind that house, and you've got this little spot where there's a tree, now we can cut the tree, take a lot out of there, but the house's orientation, the lot's orientation is not very appealing. It's gonna be a negative, and we, I think we should approach this, I approach all of these things as at the end. The house is unbuilt, then we move backwards.
You're talking about the brown one?
Fifteen.
Yeah, and that's kind of on the.
Think the whole brown.
No, it's not on the corner, we walked in there.
No, it's offset from the corner, but yes, it's, it would be down by that corner of uh.
Yeah, but, yeah, that little brown one, yeah.
Mm-hmm, that's the one.
Yeah, I think.
Touch screen.
I think twenty-nine has some interesting opportunities and it's gonna be more appealing, um. And actually, if we could figure out a way to fit a three bedroom in there. Uh, market says, if you're trying to get families in, three beds, two baths, and you've got a highly marketable product to start with. If you don't have that, that's more of a prob, yes.
Do you wanna do just twenty-nine and not fifteen? And if twenty-nine is desirable, then how come twenty-nine wouldn't like help make fifteen more desirable?
They, you're not gonna have the same owners, it doesn't, in the end, the idea is, we don't wanna have these, at some point in time, somebody's gonna buy them, so you have to look at them and like I say, I look at the end of this, who's actually gonna own those houses now, it might be twenty years from now, but if we're not planning of who our market is and who we're gonna sell or rent the house to, we need to know that before we start and work the numbers back, can this work? I'm looking at fifteen and saying that I'm not exactly sure that we should put another house there. And it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, it would be, almost makes sense that if we included that property maybe with the house that we already did. So that it becomes more sellable, because there's more space and it's got a nice backyard now, and there's a lot of other improvements to that house could make it more appealing.
But that house already is on a double lot, right? Greenhouse, that's what.
It already is a double lot, but then you've got the neighbor, if you're looking at it, the neighbor to the left may be interested in, in, in taking some land for their lot, yard, okay? So, I mean, I think there's other options and, and better and higher use value for that than only focusing on trying to get somebody in it. Um, the other reason I'm kind of leaning towards doing one is we don't kill the fund. We can do one of them, we can see how it goes, how it go, how everything happens. We have money left there, what happened with the, the project on uh Main Street, one fifty-nine there, um. Where the people were coming in and they're gonna redo that, they're in here. Where the people were coming in and they're going to redo that. They're in here. I don't know.
I don't know what you're talking about.
One uh.
Main Street?
No, it's a.
You're you're thinking of the Wells Court House again?
Wells Court, yes. Um, that house and that that project there, we have people that are interested in putting a number of apartments in it.
He's thinking of the the um mansion.
Mansion, yeah.
Uh, they got the project.
Okay, they're gonna move forward then.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Tom, can we do just one?
I would not recommend.
I'm.
We have already done the test on Jarvis Street.
Yeah.
The neighborhood is full of people who rent the houses on the lots that they have and I would really advise against, let's knock things down and not replace them if you think that's going to help the housing.
Do you think to also to your point like? All right, let's say it goes, we have a little bit of trouble with twenty nine. Could we add on a third, like a third bedroom? Like how? No, like, uh, no?
Modular, so they're.
In their module, yeah.
I mean, like, I know what they are, but like, can't you like?
You you have to order one that way.
Well, the other thing is if we're going to be in the rental business, generally you don't want to be renting three and four bedroom homes. It's more people, more wear and tear, like kind of better have it, you know, people rent it and you know.
I see what you're saying. I think that some like, I don't know. I think this is worth it. I think it scares me because ever since I've known about the revolving loan funded, it's like a security blanket to me and I don't know what how to get that back, but I I I I want, I'm going to vote yes.
Well, my last comment now that's it down is that I my concern is that the amount of money we're spending, that if we can get some other projects going. We there hasn't been anything taken out of revolving loan fund for good reason. The state of Vermont really didn't want anything built. And that that's just a, you know, from my opinion and also my experience, they've changed their minds. They've changing the laws and the regulations, the planning commissions and in the the beginning parts of rewriting the codes so that we could do more infills, so we could take some of the homes that they have and actually put more housing into them. So I think there's going to be some more interest would be the hope. I don't think we should do nothing down there. I think that's an important neighborhood too. But I think it's a massive, massive project to lift all ships down there. It's it's a big issue with the flood zone for everybody else. They can't do anything with their properties because nobody can get loans at any houses down there. And I think they, I understand where you're coming from getting housing, but there's intrinsic intrinsic issues with just that land and that area and what's going on with it. That's why nothing's happened. There's a good reason nothing's happened. So anyway, that's that's my viewpoint, my two cents, whatever it might be worth to you.
Thank you.
Hello, Cliff. Thank you for your time. I said, thank you for your time. I appreciate that. My heart does matter too.
Is there any other discussion? Brian, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Hold on.
I will keep you in the loop. It's uh, if it's making you feel queasy, you're getting something done. And I appreciate the passion and I know the planning commission is, it is a rock and a hard place. Like, all of the things you say make this lot bad are the things the state says we want more of. No setbacks, no yards, bigger density, and that doesn't magically make that's where people want to live.
No, I know. And and that's part of the problem where short side when there's some immediate reaction based side, which we've been living through for decades now. Look at our education system.
Because the other the other side, just with that neighborhood, the rules down there are, if we knock something down, don't immediately replace it. We can't come back and do it. That's where back in the, I guess, seventies, uh, the the town got a federal grant to knock down a bunch of the houses for fire safety reasons and they they can't be rebuilt. So um. If, once again, this does continue and encourages people either to if it really works and we say, we'll pay you twenty five thousand for your house. We know that it works and we we have a don't have to use a huge imagination and say, what a cute little neighborhood, like a whole bunch of little houses that look the same. It can happen. But that vision is is pretty rare and that's why the houses do a praise for half of what it costs to build.
Hearing somebody wants to be a developer in their retirement.
New. Well, that's.
One positive I see about houses on National Street is that uh, Mary and I walked down there the other day is I think it feels very private back there.
Yeah.
And I like that. Um, I mean, I would certainly put some growth on that fence so you weren't looking at cones all the time, but on the other hand, it feels very private. It's dead ends on both ends. And what a great place, what a safe place to raise children who ride their bicycles.
Yeah.
So personally, the location to me, if you could block out cones a little bit, is ideal for your.
Uh, the river's right there. It's.
On the other side, behind you.
Yeah. It's a nice little, yeah, I like National Street, like a nice little look down there.
And that's why I'm suggesting a three because it.
Yeah.
Kids, yeah.
Well, and the not to drag this on forever, there are opportunities for other building and it it when the governor was in town with the state people, we looked out the window at the Goodyear parking lot and we said at this housing thing, prove a concept, like one of the guys when uh, he was the deputy secretary of something or another, said, well, you know, these modular houses don't save us any money. And I'm like, well, if it costs four hundred thousand dollars to build a stick house and you have a modular house, why would you sell it for less than four hundred thousand? You know, you're going to sell it for what you can get it, no matter even if it only costs you fifty cents to build, you're not going to pass the savings along in a market where you don't have to. I said, we we happen to have an inside track on somebody and he's willing to do this and it is it stood up against other quotes of what other modulars would cost. So we can, he's willing to commit to doing it for this price. And if that works and you know, everything is all sunshine and rainbows, you take that Goodyear parking lot and you put forty more of them on and that's not quite so private on National Street, but the fence does come down and you have a playground in the middle and maybe that's what it looks like down there in thirty years. And I think that's the the thing that with the density down there and people constantly being concerned about their tax burden, one house doesn't change that, but if you go from a neighborhood where you have forty houses with an average value of thirty thousand dollars to three hundred thousand dollars in thirty years, that that would have made not just a difference financially, but I think a difference in the livability of the community and it's not going to make it worse.
Bigger vision.
And I think and unless the whole state just goes belly up, the 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 whole affordability thing, it's like it I push it back when people say the the houses aren't affordable. I go, what do you mean not affordable? They sell in a week. Somebody's affording them. Right? So it's an availability, not an affordability. And obviously that changes because it wasn't that long ago when you couldn't give houses away. But um. We have the location to the Upper Valley. We have the walkable community. We have all of those things that if you continue to invest, there's a higher likelihood of success than maybe the average place. All right.
Well, we're moving on to discussion item, vision, public outreach. There will be different areas here.
So the intention of this item was just the continuation of what we talked about in the past. Um, and do you like basic things? Do you want us, we talked about like, we could schedule some pop up like meet the.
Meet and greets.
Yeah.
What's thinking about that? With, do we want to put any money into this? Like I after the amount of things I voted to spend money on today, I feel mildly uncomfortable saying that sentence, but like, do we want to say, hey, we're going to spend to pay for like apps at a restaurant and have people come and they can buy food like? My one random idea that I had that I started attacking Mary about was I want to I the new Jamaican restaurant, which I believe is Nod's Irie Jam. I'm like, what if we paid for like a couple of apps there and we can be like, and we have office hours and then like people will come by hopefully like and eat and drink and say, this is what I want. Or do we want it to be like at the welcome center and we like? But do y'all, do y'all, is that insane?
The restaurant, the other thing is you need to probably talk to the owner.
Well, no, absolutely.
Can I interject just a little bit? Don't put the details.
I do.
Pick places you want to go. You buy somebody a beer, the town can swing the beer. If it turns out there's going to be enough people and you want to have ritz and crackers and cheese, you can do that. So I think stick to the concept, we can, we can come up with a couple of thousand dollars.
Oh, no, 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 I don't want to do that.
That would just mean it's that successful.
Right.
I just.
So I I get like these staged events or whatever. What I've always found, whether and I'm, you know, taking a very narrow approach from the law enforcement world or wherever, but from that, from laying out coffee cup, there's people that you're going to those don't really bring in new voices in your sphere. I think that my biggest thing for public outreach is organically, the people on this board need to talk to their networks, expand, be in different places somewhat organically and you can do the staged events, but I think you're ninety five percent of those people are the same people that answer his survey anyways and see his email.
That's exactly the point. You don't do the staged events. You just say, I'm going to be at the Georgetown Tavern on open mic night.
How is that not a staged event?
Because it's not, you're just saying I'm going to be there. The people that you go to like your network of friends, you can have some things that say, hey, we're going to be at the welcome center of the library from nine to noon or something. But I think the more important thing is is the the quantity of things that you're all plugged into different parts of the community instead of just going and talking about the Red Sox. You go there and you say, hey, I'm here, you know, what do you think about this? And if that turns into a a more staged event where you go, you know what, I've had enough interest, let's put something together and you want to have some light refreshments or seriously, if you say, hey, thanks for your input, now let me buy you a beer for you. We can do all of those things to make it a place where people want to hang around and talk.
Yeah.
In an informal, spontaneous, organic way.
Well, how do you advertise it?
You don't.
I don't, but that feels like I'm still only going to reach people in my cycle or my bubble to a degree.
Right.
Your people and their people.
Like what?
Maybe.
You belong to a church?
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
No.
Exactly.
I.
You drink a lot?
Yeah. Uh.
Here to put up with her husband, she asked to.
Yeah.
Um, that, you know, I would say that, I mean, and that's 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 this is what this kind of topic is is on here for is if you're involved in a social organization, if you're involved in Little League or even if you're not, if you're on the select board, it may not be a bad idea to go to the fairgrounds, you know, during some games and just say, hi, this is who I am. Listen, we're looking to put some things together. But that's like kind of maybe stepping out of your comfort zone, but it's part of being a representative of of the town. But there are some things where you should feel very comfortable. You just may not have talked about those things, whether that's Rotary or church or Little League or you play golf or you know, whatever that is, you just find those organic ways to to meet people, but make it a point to talk about the future of the community.
And take better notes. A lot of folks, you drop. I do it all the time. Just introduce yourself and hey, hey, you know, I was on the select board. Hey, what? And if you even give a little few prompts, you'll be surprised.
They'll just go.
Everything.
Right.
And well, I've been meaning to talk to you about that. And so those things, this, again, I I don't, the staged events are uh.
Okay, heard.
No, I mean, I'm not trying, just saying it's.
I do think we should do one. I do think.
Right, we should do different kinds.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Um, I thought the pop up senior center might be an option.
Yeah.
Um, for that demographic.
Yeah.
There aren't a lot of tendencies, however, and um, I was told that the person in charge would think about it. So I was surprised there was not.
Sorry, overwhelming.
Yeah, yeah. Um, because I think that might, that opportunity might exist.
Whatever constraints you have in your head, it it ranges from just talking to people and whatever you do in life to putting out a list that says, I'm going to be here on Monday, here on Tuesday. If you see me, talk to me. So is that advertising? It is, but is it? I'm going to be at this restaurant at this time and talk to me about these topics. It's not that, it's just a, and at least from the experience that they went through in Woodstock that I referenced, but um, is that eventually that will get known. And people may start looking for you because now they have something to say and the first conversation may not be what you want to hear, but if they know that now they have an ear to talk to, it's it's it 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 is exactly not that you have one opportunity to come to the welcome center to give us your input because that is the exact same people all the time. So this is something to just let it grow. Whatever you think would work, you just do it.
It's true. But when I got on the board, when I'm out doing my walks, people I would just say hello to all of a sudden went, hey, you're on the slick board now. I had a problem with my. I kept hearing things like that or, you know, or I've got a problem with the road or and it's like, well, I don't have a lot to do with that, but you know, so you listen to him. So it's like, I understand what you're saying. Just kind of pocket up the word of mouth will get out.
When I when I have this this meetup location things that awkward phrase, because it doesn't mean anything to anything, really to anybody, but that is if you want to let me know that you are going to be, you're going to make it a point to go to the Georgetown Tavern or where the Harpoon or wherever you're going to be, just say, hey, Tom, uh, I'm, you're going to put that on Facebook or put it in your newsletter. And um, and that can be the next stage up from not telling anybody, but a stage down from there's going to be a public forum on this that.
Do you mean like you tell you so you could put it in the news?
If, or we could put it on our Facebook page or not, like that's like, just leave it to.
I don't have Facebook, so I'm not, and I will not go on it frankly, so.
Well.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we pay people to do it. The town does. So you don't have to, you don't have to dirty yourself, but the word could get out there.
This Facebook event, Mary and Emma are trying to be at Harpoon for lunch. Hey, come say hello.
I don't want to.
That's what you're talking.
And you have to give me a ride back. Did you have a question? I think Cliff.
I got it.
Still.
But you can't do it from there.
I mentioned, I like the peanut gallery. I'm not on camera. Nobody told me to say I sounded like me, but that wasn't me. Uh, here's an idea. Why don't you, we got a little table we can lend you, um, get a little banner made up saying, meet your select board member and go to Price Drop. Because that's where.
So scary.
You're right.
That is. So you guys are worried about where the people are, just go where the people are. Every Saturday and Sunday, there's a constant stream of people.
Together or. Section are like more than two people out of town.
No, you're not really, that's not really a meeting, a meeting.
If you're talking about anything, anything about the town.
Become.
But there's the only answer that plus that you could.
I think we could do it.
All right, you do it two at a time, whatever. I think I still don't. I think you could argue it's not a meeting by having input from constituents for you guys to talk about.
It's not, you go, you're right, our roads need to be better and we'll bring it up at the next meeting and we'll vote to pave your road instead. Now you just, you're going to jail.
Well, yeah, I think it should be life sentence, but you know.
I have an idea.
Ridiculous stuff gets.
Just with public outreach, because we're always like, how do we get more people to?
And different people.
I'd be handing out cards and if you're going to do it, if you did that, you hand out cards and say, hey, we're going to have a a citizen forum or we're going to get together and and uh, we're going to buy beer at the Georgetown Tavern on Thursday night and you hand cards out, you'll feel.
But what if?
You can't talk in there, though.
What if we did something like a block party to get the people of Windsor out? So there's like, so no, we have an autumn moon festival and that's for not just Windsor, that's for everybody.
Right.
I'm talking a a Windsor block party.
How about this?
Anything you want to do, you can do.
Okay.
You just got to organize.
Might get, it might get people out, like, oh, food. Oh, James, you got bouncy houses like we got.
I I don't, B, you do that every year.
What, a block party?
Yeah, and have like bouncy houses at the common.
Yeah.
Shut down the street and have food vendors and hustling people and all that.
Yeah, that would be great. Let's do it in the fall when it's already.
I know that they have. No, this is different. This would be winter.
Yes, second of all, there's more than one block.
Really, I.
Expand your imagination.
I don't, I don't want to go down this rabbit hole of we should. You can do whatever you want. If you want to have a block party, just start putting the ideas together and pick a time. All I'm looking to do here is you got to go from talking about doing it. So in in June, think to yourself what I would like to do. What are you doing?
But.
Nothing.
I'm I'm putting my hands in my head and I'm jiggling my leg. No, I think.
In June, think about where.
Well, yeah, just send me a thing saying I did this or I want to do it and it doesn't have to be public and like it would not be public, but it's a way to start doing the outreach. Okay, so if it turns out that you you talk to somebody at the grocery store and you don't have to have a bunch of details, it's like, we can just report at the meetings that the process is starting. If you see us, talk to us, that kind of thing and. And as it develops, it can be more formal, but rather than should we do it this way or these kind of events don't work? There's all, the only commitment is time. So.
Nike says. Yes, do it.
So just do it.
The pond's a good one.
Yeah.
The summer months right now.
Pond, we have the concerts on the common, alumni weekend. There's a lot of things that already exist. And a lot of those things can get taken to the next level pretty easily, like a concert on the common turns to a block party because we close off the streets around and put the bounce houses out there, you know, kind of thing.
All I'm gonna wear is polo shirts to say Windsor Select Board.
No.
There we go, push forward.
So.
But I've got a suggestion when you do this.
Should, we should be meeting with people and doing this outreach now between now and our.
With the good weather here.
You only meet once a month, you know, we have one more meeting here and one in June. So the whole point of this was think about what you'd like to do. And when I put on there, uh, narrow or wide focus, that's up to you. Like, what do you think Windsor should be in 10 years? Or is your street okay?
Yeah.
You know, so that's, it's up to you, not that there's.
I really like the Price Drop idea, like with tables, because everybody does go there. That's where I get my signatures every year.
I think one of your goals should be to sign people up for the newsletter. You're doing this because you're having a hard time communicating with the town. And I think just a tiny, how many people are on the newsletter?
Eleven hundred.
Okay, that's, I thought it was gonna be, but.
Yeah, if they're not already like.
But I mean, how many email addresses are still good?
Uh, they bounce when they don't, but I mean, anyway, the point is, is we don't have, Windsor has no form of communication at all.
We don't have a newsletter. We don't, we have our. I mean, a, a newspaper, we don't.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we do have our TV channel, which I think people is not top of the mind for enough to, to go there.
Come here and say something controversial at this meeting and watch 7,000 people know about it on Windsor Vermont Happenings. It has 6,000 subscribers.
When, when it comes up, absolutely, you know, let's talk about masks. But the point is that, that I think we need, the newsletter is probably one of the most effective ways to communicate on a regular basis and keep it top of the mind.
I like that.
Because I think the people who are involved with Windsor on air and everything else, they're, they're getting probably the newsletter. They're thinking.
Plus we're meeting new people who just.
It's a nice opener, right?
An email every week.
It's a nice opener when people come up to you. Hey, by the way, we're trying to get people to sign up for the newsletter. And all we need to do is get their email.
Yeah, and get their email address, yeah. Getting commitment and engagement is, you know, should be, you know, one, one of the objectives of this. And it's simple thing like somebody agreeing to give an email address shows a level of commitment. And it's certainly a way to say, hey, it was great talking to you. You know, we're, we need somebody for the conservation commission. You know, that's not your next email, but you kind of get the point that this isn't a one and done thing. This is, we're gonna be talking about, look at the consternation about spending money tonight. This is kind of like what the next several years in town is either gonna be or not. Um, because those are the kind of decisions you wanna make. And not for nothing, everything that we've done over the years has been widely supported financially, publicly. Nobody is saying that's a stupid idea after it's done. That's kind of what, for those of you who are on Facebook, the town Facebook, I've been making the banners before and after pictures for about a month now. That people, like this week is the welcome center. That happened before I was here, like 2009 or so.
I was on the board then.
You were? And it's like, I, I saw somebody comment like, where is that? I don't know. But if you don't, if you don't know what it used to be, um, then you can't have an appreciation as much for what it is now. And um, there's a lot of little nuggets like that all around town. I think the town should really be proud of the money and the commitment that they've done to improve things. But the other side of it is, it's been 20 years since the welcome center. It's been 25 years since this building was built that it takes a long time and a lot of money and it's perseverance.
Lots of people didn't even know that we, where the resource center was when I was getting a petition for them one year.
Well.
And that's been there for.
You don't use it.
Twenty years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
It's like, what part of town? Where is that? It's like, I know it, but not everybody knows it.
And most people don't need to.
Right.
But the welcome center is something that anybody could use.
Yes.
And when I got here, it's like, I can't believe they built that stupid building. Like you can't even find it. It's stupid. It costs all that money. And I'm like, okay, well, look, there was a reason. It had to be near the transportation hub. That's the Amtrak thing. So you took their free money. You built it where you wanted to. And then you see what it used to look like between the resource center and then you go, oh, that's bad. And now you look, it's booked almost every weekend because people go to internet parties. And I think it's the same thing with any of these other things. Um, the little thing like painting the building at the, at Kennedy Pond red and putting more sand on there.
Yeah.
You would think Christmas came. I mean, it didn't take a whole while, but it didn't matter.
Uh, putting in a pavilion.
And there's two swings.
And swings.
The swings came with.
Carpa money.
Money with the whole playground expansion.
Well, I've been walking up there, so I noticed.
So are we good with this?
Wow, those are cool.
Good to push forward. Just think we've kind of beat it.
Yep.
Down.
Well, now the next phase, a little bullet point there is the fun part. And you don't have to like commit this to memory, but there is this document that is in the packet and it's like, well, how do you pay for this stuff? Because all of them are fun ideas until you put a price tag on it, as we found out a little bit earlier. Um, and basically what it says is, um, we have a capital fund. And what does the Government Finance Office Association say about that? It says, well, here's some rules if you're gonna have one. So that's one way to pay for things. You save for them and you put them in a capital fund. Then it goes through, um, loans that we use to go through this that on every warning, there's a question that says, can the select board borrow money for up to five years to meet certain needs? And it passes. And just as a, a magnitude of cost, it costs $2,400 a year to borrow 10,000. So we borrow 50,000 for a police car. It adds 12,000 to the budget. So it's just an example. You wanna buy something, you can save for it, or it costs about that much money. Those are kind of easy because their life expectancy kind of matches the loan thing. Um, then it goes into our reserve fund and our capital fund. Um, and I think the, the, the part that needs to rattle around a little bit is, we, we raised $38,000 this year for any, every penny on the tax rate. So each penny we add adds eight tenths of one percent to the tax rate this year. So if we put 100,000 in our capital reserve, as we know, going through the budget process, you're adding a little over 2% to the tax rate just by putting $100,000 in the capital. Uh, but now you have that money. So when we need to borrow it from ourselves to use it for cash flow, we have that. We can also make interest on it. So that part's helpful. Um, and you have that money. So if you're planning for something, you wanna, you wanna build a new salt shed that's 200,000, you say, well, we're gonna save $25,000 a year. And when the time comes, we'll buy it. On the one side, you're paying for it with future money. Future money is generally worth less than present money. But on the other side, particularly these days, inflation goes up more than value of money. So but the idea is if you want things, you have to pay for them one way or the other. And savings is one way. And that's the impact it has on the tax rate. And then bonds, as we discussed earlier, is the other way to do it. And that too, as I mentioned earlier, 65 to 85,000 a year for 20 years. And every time you bring on a million dollar bond, you're adding about 2% to the tax rate. So there's no way to get around increasing taxes if you wanna do things. The question is, do you wanna save for it? And sometimes there's a, that's the appropriate way. Sometimes you wanna borrow for it. I mean, all things being equal, I've preferred borrowing because if you save for a long time, like a road, um, the people who are paying their taxes, maybe they moved to Florida. So they never got to drive on the pretty new road where the people who are in town for those 20 years at the bond payments making, they're taking, they're getting the advantage of whatever it is that you built. Town Hall is a great example. If they would have saved to, you know, all the money that it takes to do this, that would have taken a very long time. And a lot of the people may never have been around to enjoy this Taj Mahal. But now it's uh, being used by the people who, you know, were paying the bills over that time. I think given how the economy has changed, um, the town really should get more focused on putting more money in the bank rather than borrowing all the time. Like, we, we've gone through years where we put nothing in, or we put 50,000 in, or we bought something, you know, really happened. This year we're at 50,000 for the capital and 75 for the reserve fund, and that's good. But.
Doesn't even buy you a police car or even a.
Nothing. That if incrementally back that up to a point where you were putting, say, two to 300,000 a year into savings or ideally more, that you would have a several million dollars, that you can always be planning, you can do the engineering, you can see it forward, the money is there. Um, and it's just, you know, with a $7 million budget, we should have a million dollars in our reserve fund, like just the reserve fund anyway. Cause you, you never know what the world's gonna be throwing at you. So uh, we've made great progress, but we're not all the way where we should be. And whether you have great conversations about people wanting new parks and new playgrounds and new this, what, what is happening and what has to happen is the roads continue to deteriorate. If you don't do anything, they only get worse and people get angry. The water and sewer system, when it doesn't work, people get angry. And it costs a lot of money to do those things just to make life normal. And my experience has been if people see the value for it, they haven't complained. They complain about the roads being bad. They don't complain as loudly about the cost that their taxes went up in order to pave it. And as long as you pay where people drive, as well as the back road, everybody gets something sprinkled, you get that support at the close. So that's what the whole point about is having this outreach. It's uh, for better or worse, at least during my time, it was Irene, the dam, the roads are washed out. It's terrible. We gotta do this. Plus we got a lot of money from it. And people were screaming about how bad the roads and sidewalks were. So we put a lot of money in the roads and sidewalks. I think these days it's a little less clear just about what, what the next priority is. I, I do get a sense that there is a stronger demand for quality of life investment. Um, that isn't just good roads and sidewalks. It's, it's uh, like the playground that went in and over at the fairgrounds. People were, yeah, yeah, we're all about that. The, the dog park, you know, people, we want, and those are the things that make it a nice place to live. And Facebook says there are naysayers on everything, but in general, I think the, the community appreciates those expenditures.
Are we on town managers report?
We are. Kind of backwards. Yeah. So the DRB approved the houses. Uh, you just signed the law. So we're all good to go.
Okay.
Um. Uh, financial year ends. Um, right now I'm thinking we're gonna have about a hundred and $50,000 deficit. Um, part of that is, hey, we cut everything like to the bone this year. So that's bad. And we had something break the wrong way. There are, there's about 50,000 in unknowns that occurred. Like we didn't know, I didn't know that we were gonna be required to update our pension plan to meet new federal regulations. And that cost $10,000 to do that. No option. Um, it's several thousand dollars, I forget the exact number, uh, for this new daycare tax. You know, that went into effect. You all are paying it out of your, your paychecks.
You're all.
And, and employers required them to match it, so.
To advance society, we must pay for children. Tom, what was the deficit last year?
Uh, 50? Uh, uh, at the end of the year?
I don't know.
Uh, I got it. It's something close enough, 50,000 ish.
Okay. So last year was like 50,000. This year I think it's gonna be like 150,000.
Yeah.
Ouch. Okay.
That comes out of our reserves.
It, it does. We haven't, you know, physically pulled from them. It's kind of, I don't wanna call it float, but it's, um, it's, it's part of the, um, more defined process. Like we have a policy that says the select board every year shouldn't, should make a decision to do something with a surplus or account for a deficit. And something with the surplus is to put it into reserves, the capital, or buy down the subsequent year's tax rate. Or, um, with a deficit to pay from reserves or increase, you know, make it an expense line item. Um, I've gone back through, I think back to 2002 and we were cumulatively less than a hundred thousand dollars. So it's just hasn't been a thing year. Like one year was 400,000 to the good. One year was like 300,000 to the bad, you know, that kind of thing. Um, one of the real challenges, not just in Windsor, is the financial expertise of municipal staff. Like I am not an accountant. Um, I can run a business and I know how much we're making and how much we're spending. But when you get into depreciation, you know, I think I've talked about that before. We don't budget depreciation. We budgeted capital savings and, and debt expense that they should equal, but they don't. And there's reasons for it. Um, but there's a number of things that go into the audit that show surpluses or deficits that have nothing to do with the annual operations. You know, the biggest thing that always impacts things are the incurring expenses related to grants or capital projects, like a road paving project, but we don't get the bond money until the next year. So we may show an $800,000 deficit one year and a $900,000 surplus the prior year and hopefully, you know, the world stabilizes a little bit, but um, not just the, the drama that is the drama of the world, but to have, as I've said, I don't know how many times, 10 years to go through closing out FEMA paperwork. I don't hear anybody complaining about trying to make FEMA better. You know, pay the money, but it is miserable to go through all of that, then have a second FEMA event, to have a pandemic. Um, there hasn't been just the normal get up in the morning, go to work, spend some money and go back to bed, um, year in over a decade. So uh, it would be nice to have one of those things. Natalia is by far the most proficient financial mind that has been around here for a long time. And that's part of the starting at the basics and getting, not just the policies, policies don't matter if nobody knows what the underlying issues are. So to get into this thing, you're gonna hear about the finances every month. You're gonna see the money we have in the bank. You're just gonna see what our cash flow is. And you're not gonna get tested on it, but you, over time, you all become aware. And then when we get to this year's audit, um, I think there will be a, a discussion in the budget process this year that says, this is where we are. It's not gonna match the number in the audit, but there's gonna be, it doesn't match the number in the audit because of A, B, and C. So if there can be agreement that says this is the operating surplus or deficit, this is what the voters said, this is the budget the board approved on, this is how we performed on it. What do you wanna do about that? Um, that, that will happen this year. And internally what is happening is department heads are getting the same say immersion into the town and their own budgets. They've always been aware of the line items. They've been good about managing them, but it'll go to the next level of, um, well, Kevin, you said you needed more bunker gear because of whatever reason. So you're gonna need 5,000 budgeted. Show me where you're going to take it from. And if there isn't anything in there, he can come to me and say, well, I don't really have anything. So James hasn't been paying attention to his bucket. So take it out of the rec center and, and have processes like that. And internally, I can approve within a department transfers. If they go between departments, I would bring that to the board to say, Kevin needs money from James. Do you guys approve that? So then there's not gonna be anything that changes as far as how things uh, actually happen. It'll just be the process that makes them happen. And I think it's gonna be much more rigorous. Um, and it'll take a little bit of a learning curve, but anyway, that's the direction we're going. But this, this whole thing now is just something you have in the back of your mind. If you think a million dollars is $75,000 a year. 75,000 is 2% right now in the tax rate. So do I want that? Um, million and a half dollar Central Street paving project that's gonna raise our taxes 3%. So what do you think about that? I don't wanna do it, I'm afraid. Okay, well, go be afraid and talk to people down on Central Street. You're not gonna pay their street. You know, there is no escaping the fear. It's just what fear do you wanna face?
Next year will be interesting with how all the school stuff shakes out too.
I, I, well, yes, because I think that's the other, what schools have done and there's no solution that I'm seeing coming out. Uh, they, they can shuffle the chairs on the Titanic, but I don't see anything that's gonna make the cost of education.
Well, what are you saying? I mean, they, it's. Well, what are you saying? I mean, they, it's only gonna be one percent this year or whatever, but they haven't changed anything.
Oh, well, yeah, it's, this, this is a one-year magical fix because they got so much heat last time. And the, and the other side of it is the twenty-some odd percent increase in healthcare. That there's no magic fix to that. That's only getting worse. So when you have people saying, I want my road fixed, and you're saying, well, that's great, but our healthcare went up, and they go, well, then I don't have that kinda healthcare. I'm, don't do it. And you go, all right, well, then the labor market's pretty darn tight. We only have four guys on the highway department. We lose one because they go to a better thing. Now we only have three. And without a good compensation and benefit package, which municipalities are known for, we don't have number four. So which do you want? And there are plenty of towns that contract with some guy with a truck, and they, they plow their eighty miles of roads and they're damn happy about it. But so far, that's not what the expectations are in the less rural communities. I'm sorry, I've talked too long. I gotta go. My wife is, shut up, I've been watching this for a while.
That's not true. I am done.
About the, the dry cleaner.
Oh, dry cleaners, they're doing test wells. Uh, they're, that's all finished up. I said, please get those fifty-five gallon drums on there. It looks like Love Canal. Um, that's the old time original super fun site for younger folks. Um.
Really? You have no clue?
Buffalo. I was born in the late eighties.
Now, what about the rail yards?
The rail yards? The rail yards, um, it, it's looking like a park. The contractor will be back on site next week, he says, after he puts back together everything that washed out and some of his other projects around the, of the weekend. Um, the fence contractors, I'm meeting out there tomorrow morning. The fence contractors are kinda, they're, they should be ready to go about the same time the, the final grading and everything is done. So, uh, I think I mentioned the picnic tables are ordered, some grills are ordered, we signed the contract for the skate park, a half the skate park. Um, but should be challenging enough for anybody that I've seen, uh, skate parking around town. So I would say by August, it'll definitely be fully functional, and that's just a function of the grass, you know, cover. So that, and I think that's gonna be another thing. Ten years from now, people aren't gonna say, well, what did that cost? You'll just show them a picture of what that mess was, and now it's pretty down there and it's right in the middle of town. So everyone's gonna wanna live in a house on National Street because they don't have the yard, so they're gonna wanna come up to the rail yard.
Um, nice.
Uh, and the crosswalk signs, that's coming along though. They'll happen this summer. It's just going through the process of the regional planning, getting the official get the federal money. Are you, uh, where are you gonna put it? Is it the right distance from the crosswalk? Show us. We have to approve the location.
Fun stuff.
Fun stuff.
All right, so last thing is you and Jeffrey from the prison. I missed that thing today.
Um, I think, um, between this Tom and Tom Kennedy, we were well represented and well informed. Um, I think it was a rerun for most people though.
Sure. Uh, Joe Major is, uh, indicated that uh, moving the prison property forward, whatever that means, is a high priority for him. Wendy Harrison, uh, is, I think, in her second term, so she's new as the chair of that committee. So, I mean, that there's some new blood that's involved in this. Um, I, the, the impetus for this is that our senators chose to, uh, submit a bill or an amendment or something saying, hey, the state should give the prison to the town. We're like, what?
That would tell him the town.
It was about everybody's money and demolition, like it's done.
Only a million bucks, what's that? That's a million bucks, that's only what?
Uh, that would be a percent raise on taxes.
You said that they wanna give it to us, but they're not giving us any help to.
No, stop, stop.
That was the initial idea though.
Well, the initial idea was give it to the town.
Okay.
And radio silence.
Nice.
So we backed through the radio silence with, we would love to be, you know, collaborative partners in something that moves it together, but as you know, it costs a whole bunch of money.
Yeah.
So that kinda was the conversation, like, hey, we're really glad to work together. Here's all the reasons why we think the town would be supportive of it. Nothing is a hundred percent, but here's all the surveys and all the public outreach and all the studies and all that kinda stuff. And that, um, i- if people were motivated to do something, the, the cleanup is always been thrown around at a couple million dollars. The annual carrying cost has always been thrown around at a quarter of a million dollars. That, um, there would be ways without the state, like, giving us a three million dollar, here you go, here's the land and a whole bunch of money. As long as they were willing to work with the regulatory aspects that are associated with that for development, to do, let's call it like, uh, um, tax incremental financing where they, um, provide a financing package that gets paid back on the projected tax revenue of the development. Kind of simple example is, we're gonna run a, um, sewer line, you know, up Route Five North, and we hope someday somebody builds a corporate park out there. So you run it up there, and it turns out somebody does build a corporate park out there, and now it's got a bunch of businesses in there that pay taxes to the town and to the state. And those funds are used to pay back the tax incremental financing. Doesn't always work out that way, but, and the state is very reluctant to, to do it. But the point would be, there could be some creative financing that says, we'll help, we, we can't write you a check, but we can do these things to mitigate the risk for development and those kinda things. So it's a better conver- and I think there's general agreement that trying to get the state to agree on anything is impossible. So if it went to the town, it can be our impossibility instead of their impossibility.
So are they still leaning towards giving it to the town?
I, I thought it was a pretty positive, um, conversation. I mean, they were receptive to what Tom Kennedy said about starting to gradually remove buildings. And not wait till the last minute.
But that bill didn't make it out of committee.
Oh, yeah, the, the, and I think that's, at the end, they said, well, you know, it's almost the end of the session, so nothing will happen this year.
Right, exactly.
But it did set the table for, hopefully, a clear message is, no, we don't need another study, which has always been there. When they have no action, they say, well, let's study something. That was clear to, to begin their off-season work of a direction that can be happening. And if, and if, they just say, there's never been anybody that would champion any cause, other than Al, uh, Al Simmons, who's a, you know, the highest ranking, uh, representative from Springfield. She really wanted it to be transitional housing. But there was so much pushback, both in the legislature and from the community, uh, and the state's own study says that doesn't work for all these reasons. It didn't go anywhere, but other than that, no one's championing anything. So if Joe gets behind it, and he can do some of the legwork, you know, he is new, but there's a lot of new people out there that gets the ear of somebody in the administration. Um, the, uh, there's, I talked to, um, institutions, uh, committee. Like, you start getting some administration people and some legislative people together that can actually have a conversation to move something forward. Um, there's more hope for something good now as opposed to, let's hope they don't do something bad.
And the idea of re-engaging, um, Dr. Hitchcock and, um, Stetney in terms of housing for their employees. They must. So, I mean, that had some potential, maybe.
Yeah.
Lot of work has to go there, but still.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that seems, that one seems like a big what if, well, that's, uh.
Well, hopefully, what doesn't come out of that is, I didn't know we paid the town sixty-five thousand a year for our water and sewer bill. Why are we doing that? No one's there.
Right.
We're the state, we can do what we want.
All right. I think we just need a motion to sign orders.
I moved to sign orders.
I second. Ryan, what do you vote?
Hi.
Hi.
We will sign some orders.
Hey.
Are there any public comments for items not on the agenda?
Okay. Make sure you get everything here. Okay. Been a long time. Parking violation, anybody who wants to? Long resolution about the, uh, road bond, long resolution about the tax, uh, bond anticipation note. An actual bond anticip- or, yeah, bond anticipation note and, uh, orders. There you go. Feel free to split them up or just make it so there's three signatures, instead of five if you want to, whatever you'd like to do.
Ryan, do you remember?
Uh, I'm looking forward to dump day. Dump days went on June forty-seventh, first, huh? June twenty-first, okay, June twenty-first. And, um, looking forward to dump day, cause it's always a pretty good time.
What's happening on June twenty-first?
Dump day.
Oh, dump day, oh.
Another contributor to the deficit. But there was such pressure from the board members.
Thank you for listening.
I got through a lot of stuff the other day.
Um, I would say that I am excited and nervous, like a little chihuahua about moving forward with this tiny housing project, but I really, I really think it's the right choice. And I hope everybody is enjoying the weather, and I hope that, um, that I'm done talking, and I think I answered.
Tara, you're up, girl. Happy summer.
That's the, uh, liquor licenses.
We'll just sign it where our names are, and we'll let them figure it out. And Jeffrey, do you have any board member comments?
Oh, I don't think you do.
Me neither.
Okay, but you weren't here at our last meeting, and I feel like you would've been the only one that got it. But my board member comment was hold on, I'm just gonna remember it.
No, no, please, just don't.
Don't ask.
No, it's gonna be May, she's saying.
Yeah.
It's gonna be May.
I was like April or November. Yeah, and then I got to the internet, like, but the next time we meet, it's gonna be you. And I told him to do that like forever, but I was like, Emma was probably the only person that would've thought that, and she wasn't here. But I feel like you would've appreciated that. That was a brutal one. It's a very long story. Um, one last one right here.
It's not a board member comment, but Natalia and I and Kevin and Melissa, my wife, went to a memorial service for Ron this past week. And it was, uh, he had a really interesting life, and he had a lot of people to show up. Traveled the world, did a lot of different things, very supportive family and friends, and stuck with them for a long time, and they were very supportive of, uh, his time here, particularly the final month when, you know.
Ron did a lot for the town this work, you know, a ton. Well, I'd say it wasn't a tour, but he was here and he, he helped the finance. Here, you got one more signature.
I do.
Wait, do we have to sign here? No, yes? Okay, on that one. I didn't, so.
I'll be yellow, stick this here.
Yes, I cannot adjourn the meeting until we are done signing.
Storm out, that way more people watch it. They all need to be. There's a bunch in that package.
Right, then you need to sign that.
I was either.
Look, we almost made it, okay? So I missed like eight signatures. I'm completely messing with the order of all of these things, my bad.
It's okay. I just hand them the Tiffany and they go away.
Tell Tiffany I said. Really pretty. Hope that's in the minutes.
Guys all know the Paramount, Tammy, and you got the Booty Hill, right?
I did read about that in the East Times.
They, they are, been the death spiral over there.
It's not really new.
No, no, it's been ever since that guy, Santa Kate left, and I don't know, Yogi seemed to be getting his job done. I don't know if it's recording. Anyway, so that's one more to last to see if they do.
I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at eight forty P M.